Now, item number 12 is citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the city council. Remarks should be directed to the city council as a whole and limited to five minutes or less. Do we have any citizen? If you are approaching the podium, please tell us your name and your address, please.
I'm Cheryl Williams. I live at 1300 Lapwing Road. I've lived there since 1988. I've been a citizen of this nation all my life. My family came over in 1634 on the Elizabeth. We are longtime Americans. I am deeply offended because someone on this council felt like he could speak for all of you without your vote and most likely without your input, and then shove it down my throat. That's not the America that I live in. That's not the America that my family came to. I have no offense with anybody with a different lifestyle. It doesn't bother me in one least bit. They pay their taxes, they live a good, clean life, they are productive citizens in our city. Why can't we all just get along? Don't shove your thoughts and your desires down my throat and then do it on the behalf of your council. You all should be offended. You all should be slapping him upside the head for what he did to you. He put your name on something maybe you don't agree with it. We've never done that in this city because we've been an inclusive city the entire time I've been here. I live by people of all nationalities. I don't care what their income level is. We have the very ultra wealthy in my neighborhood and we have the ultra poor in my neighborhood. We have single family, we have multifamily, we have grandma living with the kids. We have it all. I am not offended by any of them because they are here and they are productive and they don't shove their lifestyle in my face. What you do in your bedroom is your business unless it involves children, and then it is my business and the police's business. But if you want to live a lifestyle, that's great, but don't put my city, my community, on record of proving something that we do not approve of. We could be just fine without you ever having done it, and I've lived here since 88 and we've never done it till now, and we've been just fine. So I had to say, please make this as a marker that we do not allow one person to speak for all of us again. That's called a dictator, and I don't live under dictatorship. I live in a community where elections are held and people are elected to represent me. You are representing me, and I don't agree with it and I had no voice in it. It's not disrespectful. It's not homophobic. It's that you've put my reputation, my name, my Christian belief on the line that's something I don't agree with, and that is wrong. And I'd say I would like an apology at some point from one person on this council who has taken my me, my activities, my thoughts, and put them on a piece of paper representing my community without my input and without my voice. So my voice to you today is, don't ever let this happen again because we are better than this. We are better than this. We are America, and I expect to live in an America that is free, where we all live together in peace and tranquility, and it can't happen when you cause division. We've lived through a year of it. I want peace in my community and you're not letting it happen. So let's have some peace by not doing this anymore.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Anyone else? Please state your name and your address, and please limit your comments to five minutes or less, please.
My name's Rhonda Peterson. My address is 2405 Genies Trail, Edmund, Oklahoma. I actually didn't come here planning to speak. I came here just to be supportive of the other people I've come and to hear, this is my very first time, attending a city council meeting.
Welcome.
So I came to just see this whole process and what's going on, but I also heard about this proclamation, and I am very troubled about it because as the person before me said, we don't need any more division in our country, in our cities, in our schools, in our communities. And when you do things like this, it does cause a vision. It causes division. Whether you think so or not, it's causing division. And I am going to go on record as saying I am also someone that am very kind and loving to everyone that I encounter. I do not care either how someone else chooses to live their lifestyle as long as it's not affecting me. And what I mean by that is I do have a question for this council. I heard you saying all-inclusive, and when it comes to the transgender part, I'm very concerned. Does this mean now that when we go to the restrooms, that if I want to use the restroom or my granddaughter wants to use the restroom, that I'm asking, is this now something that we're going to have to, my granddaughter's going to have to be in there with a man? Is this something that's going to happen because of this proclamation that has come? Can someone answer that question for me? Because then, right then, my rights are being removed as a woman. My granddaughter's rights are being removed as a woman, and that's where it's not okay. It's not okay when you're removing rights from one group of people to give rights to another group of people, and that's the only time you're ever going to hear me speak up and say something. And I just really saddened to hear that this was made without the input of the other council people or any other kind of input, the proclamation. And like I said, what it does is it does create division. It's just creating that division among people that shouldn't have been there and I have not seen in my own personal walk here in Edmund, who I've lived here since 2001. So, and it does sadden me for that to happen. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stevens.
Good evening. My name is Connie Thayer by 144 Coffee Creek Drive. I want to start out by thanking you, mayor and council members, for your service to we, the people. You are our elected representatives and you're supposed to represent our will. And speaking, making a proclamation for a specific set of citizens and a small portion is not a fair and equal representation of the citizens. And I would ask that whoever it is that made this, the decision to make this proclamation, make a proclamation for all of the other people, all of the other sectors of the citizenry of Edmund. I am a proud female heterosexual. I am a mother. I am an aunt. I am a friend. It is my heterosexuality that has allowed me to birth two beautiful children and a grandchild. This is what, this is the natural path of family, of life, of a lineage. And as a representative of all the straight people, I would ask that you guys give us the same representation, the same proclamation as you are giving to this specific class and not only to straight people. We have pride just like gay people do, but perhaps there are break dancers, perhaps there are garbage collectors, perhaps there are professors that would like to receive a proclamation of pride for their profession or for their class. I'm also a patriot. I would like a proclamation of patriotism on behalf of all the patriots. Would you guys be willing to make a proclamation for anybody that would like to have a proclamation? Would you be willing to give, promote, and give that same thing to every class of your citizenry like you have done tonight? Would you guys be willing to do that for us? It's a yes or no question.
Yes.
Oh, you refuse to answer it, so that means you refuse to do it?
I'll make some comments when the citizens have finished making their comments. I'd be happy to make some comments in response, but I'll reserve those until everyone's spoken.
Okay, if...
And the mayor's in charge of this meeting.
Well, the mayor's the one that made the proclamation, correct?
Yes, the mayor. In our meetings, the mayor makes all of the proclamations, the majority of the proclamations.
Okay. Then it would be the mayor that would need to respond and address the concern. And I would like for you to respond and address the concern, not in private just to me, but to all the citizens, because all the citizens are the ones that are being affected by the proclamation that you made tonight. And we deserve the same proclamation, the same representation from the leaders that we have represented.
We will take that into consideration.
Okay, and if you're not willing to give us fair and equal treatment, we will see what we can do to get that with legal proceedings. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Please state your name, your address. Please limit your comments to five minutes or less.
My name is Sam Kearney, 3505 Meadow Lane. I want to thank the council for the opportunity to speak. This is obviously an exchange of ideas, and that's the beauty of this, because our voices do matter. I attended the May 24th meeting in this council chamber regarding the presentation of the concept of the proposal to build a veterans memorial at Beckham Ruckin Park. I spoke in opposition. Mayor Davis, if I may quote you, then that evening you said, "Nothing is set in stone." And also later in the meeting, Councilmember Peterson, you've also said that, "Nothing is set in stone." And the veterans memorial is all concept and proposal at this time. And if I may also quote you, Mayor Davis, at that meeting, you said, "We have a duty to protect the rights of citizens." Thank you for saying that because I want to discuss the rights of citizens versus the rights of a special interest group, which is really at the fundamental core of our democracy and our government. What is the best for all citizens? What we have here is a special interest group wanting to gain control over public lands like our parks. They want to put their special imprint on city park designed for use by all the people. I think the council agrees that our parks are designed for all people. If I may present this question. As a matter of basic public policy, and a legal question is this: Should the government allow a special interest group to have special use privileges over the rights of all citizens to have equal access to and use of our public lands like our parks? And I contend the government should not allow this. If I may give analogy scenario for you to consider, think about our teachers, and this town loves our education. They are wonderful public servants. Let's say our teachers got together, retired teachers, 10 or 15 of them, and said, "What are we going to do with all the wonderful memorabilia we've collected through the years, the letters, the gifts, everything? Let's create a museum. Let's have a public museum for education, all the plaques, all the kids, all the stuff that they've given us through the years. We could build a museum here and people could come visit the museum. We could maybe have conferences and convention at our convention center. People would come in from out of town, stay at our hotels, our restaurants. It would be great for our city." And where could we put this? How about Mitch Park? 280 acres. The education people get together, they ask the city for one acre of land for the building and two acres for a parking lot. This would be wonderful for our city. So they call the city up and say, "Could we do this on a public park? This is going to be wonderful for our city, community." City should say no. You cannot have your special thing on public land. The public land is for everyone. The city should say no to the teachers. If you want to build that, that's great, we will support you, but you cannot build it on a public land like our parks. The government should not allow a special interest group to have special privileges over the rights of all citizens to enjoy our public lands. Our public parks are wonderful and should be sacrosanct. No group should be allowed to place their imprint upon them. Tell the veterans group that you have re-analyzed the situation, and you cannot allow the precedent of one group getting their way over public lands. All of you on the council are called to serve our city, and that is wonderful, and you are also simultaneously in positions of power over our lives. I ask you to exercise your power to protect the rights of all of our citizens and their rights to use our public lands. Project into the future. Decisions today with our parks are crucial to our quality of life. I urge you to reserve Beckham Ruckin Park for all citizens. I ask the council to create a new committee to find a new location for the veterans memorial, not on public park land. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney.
Afternoon, council. My name is Leslie Mahan. I'm at 16304 Seminole Point Place, Edmund, Oklahoma, 73013. I too am also just very concerned about what has taken place with all the division. But I want to take your focus off of that for a second about something that is even much more important. There is a fight going on right here in our backyard with these illegals that are coming into our country. My mother was born and raised in Lima, Peru, and went through the proper channels to become an American citizen. And this administration is flooding these illegals into our cities and everything like that, and they think that they're entitled to everything that we own. You don't know what has happened. When I heard about this, I was just, I couldn't even take it. It was so, so horrible. A woman, a mother of a 15-month-old girl, was home alone taking care of her child while her husband was working at where he works. This was here in our area, y'all, and you better pay attention to what I'm about to say. She gave her body to these illegals over her child. They wanted to rape her child. Do you understand how horrible that is? I'm the mother of a 13-year-old daughter. These illegals, entitled that they are, they came into this woman's house, she couldn't even cry for help. They gay raped her all day long until her husband found her disheveled. Could you even imagine what it's like? Could you even fathom what that's like? We are in a spiritual battle of good versus evil. That is what is going on right now. Something needs to be done.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Please state your name, your address. Please limit your comments to five minutes or less.
Mayor Lamb, members of the city council. It's really short, short meeting. I mean, little statement. Under Mayor O'Neill, well, first off, I'm surprised how much I agree with everybody's saying, I'm just not, I'm kind of speaking monotone, hoping not to... But anyway, what I found from Mayor O'Neill is the mayor has one vote, and I've kind of accepted that, that the mayor has one vote on the city council, on, we're represented by five representatives. But tonight, we had a proclamation pressed through, very controversial, without a vote of our representatives, and I'm shocked at that. My thing was to call for a vote on that proclamation. I know most proclamations are, but most of the proclamations are not as controversial as what we saw tonight. The other thing is, in my years at Tinker Air Force Base, we always looked for a belly button to push, and when we say a belly button to push, we look for the area of responsibility. And so that's just something in my background, we look for the area of responsibility. I think this, there's no rationale to support this proclamation. There's just no rationale now to support, well, to support the way some get off. I just, you know, state that plainly. In the air of openness, Edmund needs to know who our council supports, who our council supports for such a senseless proclamation. And so my voice is still there. I think we need to, we should have, should have needed, we needed a vote on that to see who, but right now, I'm sorry, mayor, here's the belly button.
Thank you very much, sir. Please state your name, address, and please limit your comments to five minutes or less.
Randall Shated, three-term councilman, two-term mayor. Commend you, mayor, for the resolution tonight, the proclamation, the resolution. Look around here. I think Ed gets off by coming to city council meetings and saying silly things. Yeah, it is uncalled for.
Let's keep everything civil, please. Let's keep everything civil.
I will. I'll be nice. My mother told me, always say something nice about somebody or keep your mouth shut. So it's hard to even talk when I hear the stuff that's been said.
Please address the council.
I am addressing the council, ma'am. Cheryl's grandparents, her founding fathers, came over here in 1600s. Mine came from 1100, 1900. My dad's a first generation, I'm a second generation in this country. I don't really know what that has to do with anything because my granddad, who got here in the 1900s, was just as much an American citizen and had the same rights as her ancestors who came in 1600. She said it's, we don't need this. We've never done it before. Well, frankly, I'm sorry that when I was mayor, I didn't do it. If I had to do over, I would. But, you know, black children didn't go to white schools until Board of Edusive Education in the 1950s. So the reason that it's happening now is you've had that same kind of discrimination against the gay community, and I happen to have a close family member, as most of you know who is gay. So I'm proud of you for doing what you did, mayor. You don't need to have votes on proclamations. You did the right thing. And you represent me. I mean, these people talk like they're the only ones that matter when it comes to having representation. You represent all of us. You don't just represent a select few people who are here professing that they're the majority of Edmund tonight. They're not. But you represent us all, not just a select few. I'm sorry that they feel their rights have been trampled on. When they walk out here tonight, they're no worse off, they have no fewer rights than anybody else does. Why does a white heterosexual mother need a proclamation? She doesn't. They haven't been discriminated against. So they don't get discriminated against. They feel like, including other people who they don't happen to like their lifestyle, that takes away some of their rights. What it takes away is they just don't like it. So they don't like it that you acknowledge. But I commend you for what you did tonight. I think it's, I'm proud of you for doing what you did, mayor. One of these days, it'll take open-mic night off the agenda because this type of discussion tonight, at this point in the meeting, serves no purpose whatsoever because, as you know, the lady wanted you to answer her questions and probably take a vote. You can do none of that because you'd be in violation of the Open Meeting Act if you did it. So, and Mr. Murdock's told you that 100 times or 1,000 times. So this open-mic night, I encourage you to take it off your agenda completely. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. No, 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 no clapping, no, no. This is... Thank you. Ma'am, did you have something you would like to address? Please state your name, address. Limit your comments to five minutes or less, please.
I would like to say that I object to people's personal phones recording my name and address here in this meeting, and I would like them to be turned off.
Well, ma'am, this meeting right here is being televised right now and recorded.
These are personal phones, not...
I'm saying the meeting ourselves is being televised all across of Edmund right now, and it's being recorded.
My name is Sharon Fernandez, and I live at 423 Windhill Avenue. Edmund is a community of families with family values. Your proclamation for LGBTQ plus includes pedophilia, bestiality, whatever that plus wants to mean. And I'm saying that it is wrong to take all of that and make that appropriate for the new family values here in the city of Edmund. That is not family values. And the proclamations that I am hearing are seemingly created without similar proclamations for Judeo-Christian people, for women's health, breast cancer awareness, public, the straight or white pride. You don't have anything about that. Why do you honor one group over the other? And I was a licensed alcohol and drug abuse counselor. I have worked with numerous, numerous gay people. I have no problem with that. What they do is their own business. But for you to make a proclamation that supports LGBTQ and the plus, that's wrong. That is wrong, and I would like for you to consider removing that proclamation because it does not honor family values here in the city of Edmund.
Thank you, ma'am. No applauding, please. Yes, ma'am. Please state your name, address.
I'm Mary Beth Brishers. I live at, Mary Beth Brishers. I live at 3016 Chadwick Drive, Edmund. I'm a wife, a mother, a grandmother. When we were transferred here, everyone, everyone in our community in Texas had moved to Edmund, and it's been a great move. I have raised kids, and what I recommend that you would do is have a family month or a marriage month where we celebrate everyone, and it would be inclusive. I look at things like Christmas is almost not being able to celebrate anymore, and so the Christians around here are kind of getting the short end of the stick in a lot of ways. So I'm just asking you to consider doing something where it's a family, it would be inclusive and not singling out any particular one. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, not seeing anyone else. Larry, Mr. Stevens, I would like for you to explain some of the history that was given to me on the proclamation that may or may not help some of the questions that were asked this evening or questions that may be asked in the future, but if you could give some of the history.
Sure, I'll be glad to, mayor. The proclamation actually came as a recommendation of the Employees Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. We formed a DEI committee four years ago, Natalie, something like that, made up of all employees. Also, we added an eighth core value to the city's seven core values. That eighth value was inclusion. First time we've ever added to any of those as well. But this came as a recommendation from that DEI committee. And I think several of you are also aware that currently, the Edmund Chamber is also sponsoring a community-wide DEI initiative as well. They've had some outstanding speakers come in, including our own police chief was a program one of those months. But that initiative is in its second year. Basically, we're just getting started in terms of what that can mean. But what we're talking about is in conjunction with that and certainly with the recommendation of our own employee committee. So Natalie, do you have anything you may want to add to that? You're free to do that. Natalie's kind of been our point person on some of this, but that might be a little bit helpful to people as to how this came.
Hi, mayor and council. Natalie Evans, City Manager's Office. I've been on the DEI Employee Committee for about three years now, shortly after I started with the... with the city of Edmund. And this largely came about, there is an annual municipal equality index that rates how municipalities do in terms of friendliness to LGBTQ+ community members and then employees. One of their criteria in this municipal equality index is any public acknowledgement or recognition of our LGBTQ+ community members, acknowledgement of discrimination that has been faced, acknowledgement of harassment. Pride Month, as you may know, was founded 52 years ago with the Stonewall riots in response to people who were being discriminated against. There's still a lot of work to be done, but I feel like this was a move that the committee wanted to make to express our appreciation and acknowledgement of our community. So, happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Did you... May I make a comment?
Sure, ma'am.
I represent all residents of the city of Edmund, and that includes LGBTQ+ people. They have historically been discriminated against, bullied, beat up, and abused, and that's why there's a Pride Month that, as Natalie mentioned, was started 52 years ago. This really should not be a controversial divisive issue, and I might say that I don't think the LGBTQ community, or our mayor, or the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee is creating a divisive issue. I think the people who are claiming that this is being shoved down their throat are creating divisiveness and anger when there doesn't need to be any. Edmund, I want to say Edmund is a safe, welcoming, loving, beautiful community that welcomes all law-abiding citizens. I would ask you to read the proclamation that the mayor read. I appreciate Mr. Shaded's remarks. I think they were well put, and I don't want to repeat them. But I just feel like it's incredibly important for me to say something. There are 93,000 people who live in this city, and a handful are really, really angry about this proclamation. There's a whole, whole lot, thousands and thousands, who are really happy that Edmund stepped up and finally recognized June 2021 as Pride Month. Again, I come from a place of inclusion and love and kindness and patience, not from anger. But we have many city of Edmund employees that this means a whole lot to them, that the mayor made this proclamation. We have people, residents of this community, that means so much to them that we made this proclamation. And other constituencies. The first time I was introduced as city councilwoman was elect was with a group, a center at UCO, who was an LGBTQ center, where they finally felt like they had a community who loved and accepted them here in the heart of Edmund. That was the first time I was introduced as city councilwoman-elect, and I told them, "I represent all residents of Edmund. I am a straight, white, cisgender mom. I've never been discriminated against because of my sexual orientation or my sexual identity, thus I don't need a Pride Month. We need a Pride Month when people have been harmed, and historically, this group of people have been. And I'm proud, very proud, that in 2021, the mayor made this proclamation. Didn't feel like it was shoved down my throat, but I'm proud and honored that he made it."
Mayor, just one thing I forgot to mention. This is not a unique proclamation for the city of Edmund. By way of background, the city of Oklahoma City has had this annually adopted now for three years. They started in 2019. Also, the city of Norman has a similar proclamation as well, so...
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Thank you for the citizen comments and the council comments.